I call to order the regular session of Minnetonka City Council, regular meeting, September 19th, 2022 at 5:30. I would please ask that you silence your cell phones to limit interruptions. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, I've asked, oh, I'm sorry, let's do that first.
Evans?
Here.
Janzer?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padraig Gula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Striley?
Here.
Okay, well, I got kind of excited, you know, we got a group of guys here today to help us lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked the Minnetonka Wisemen to come up and, in anticipation of the PBR bull riding, I've asked them to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise. As the floor is yours.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic of Washington State. One nation, unbroken.
Under God, indivisible.
Justice for all.
Jesus.
If you guys want to stay there, real quick, I got a proclamation here to read as well. Moving on to the Mayor's Report. The Mayor proclaimed September 19th to the 24th as Wisemen's PBR Appreciation Week. Whereas the Minnetonka Wisemen's Men Organization has a long tradition of providing service to Minnetonka through fundraising efforts and community projects, and whereas the Wisemen's Organization purchased land for the Triangle Y Camp back in 1956, opened the camp in 1964 with 18 buildings on site, and to continue to secure financial support today for the summer camp that provides activities for youth from across our region. And whereas the Minnetonka Wisemen Organization continues to be a significant community partner and has grown stronger than ever through the recent years where activities and engagement were hindered by COVID-19-related restrictions. And whereas the Wisemen's PBR Bull Riding Event on September 23rd and 24th at the Minnetonka Auditorium will include some of the best bull riders from across the country, United States, competing for one of the largest sporting event payouts in Minnetonka's history, as the Wisemen Organization continues to build on its longstanding tradition of providing quality, family-friendly entertainment to multiple generations of Minnetonka residents. Now, therefore do I, Tom Ross, Mayor of Minnetonka, North Dakota, hereby proclaim September 19th to the 14th, 2022, as Wisemen's PBR Appreciation Week in Minnetonka, and recognize the Wisemen's Organization for its tireless support of the Minnetonka community and its service to the children of North Dakota and the United States through decades of successful fundraising efforts. So. I'm getting my steps in tonight. I have one more proclamation, and that is, the Mayor proclaims September 24th to October 2nd as Diaper Needs Awareness Week. Whereas not having sufficient supply of diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy can put them at risk for infections and other related health problems. And whereas national research shows purchasing a sufficient supply of diapers can consume 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income. While 1 in 3 families struggle with diaper needs, diaper need, 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply, and many parents report missing an average of four workdays each month due to an insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas, Minnetonka is proud to be a home to trusted organizations, including Project B, Dakota Diaper Pantry, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring the health of our children and providing economic stability for families, and play a critical role in supporting families, improving infant health, and advancing our local and state economic growth. And whereas the residents of Minnetonka recognize that diaper need is a public health issue, addressing the diaper need can also lead to economic opportunities for families and allow more children to participate in childcare and early education programs that require a supply of diapers. And now, therefore do I, Tom Ross, Mayor of Minnetonka, North Dakota, hereby proclaim September 24th to October 2nd as Diaper Needs Awareness Week, and thank local organizations, their staffs, volunteers, and donors for their service during this national diaper crisis, and encourage the citizens of Minnetonka to donate and distribute diapers to families struggling with the diaper need so that all Minnetonka children and families can thrive to reach their full potential. So I think there is someone here. Thank you. That concludes my Mayor's Report. Moving on to 3.2, the Sister City Contract. What are the wishes of the council?
Move/approval.
Move by Lisa?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Moving on to number four, the City Manager's Report. Is Harold online? Oh, there he is.
Looking all romantic.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I apologize for not being in the room. I'm at the International City Manager Association Conference in Ohio, started yesterday. I've heard some great presentations. It sounds like many of the challenges that the city of Minnetonka and our staff are experiencing with regard to recruitment and retention are common issues across the country, so it's interesting to hear insights and feedback on that. But, and I'll finish this week out in Washington, DC, with Task Force 21 at their Nuclear Triad Symposium. But, so, knowing that the schedule is pretty heavy tonight on the agenda with some needs to get other places for some elected officials, I will keep my comments brief. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has about the City Manager Memo, that's part of the packet.
Any questions for Harold? If not, thank you, Harold. Moving on to item five, consider the report of the Planning Commission. We have three public hearings. 5.1, public hearing on the preliminary plat of the Lenox Park 3rd Edition. This is a public hearing. If anybody is here to comment on item 5.1, for or against? Any other comments? One last call. If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
Motion by Paul?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to 5.2, a public hearing, a major subdivision preliminary plat and rezoning of the 4th Avenue Edition. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak, either for or against item 5.2? Second call for comments on 5.2. If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
Second.
All motions carry seconds. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Final public hearing is item 5.3, public hearing, major subdivision preliminary plat and rezoning of the River Bottom Edition. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak, either for or against, item 5.3 on the agenda? Last call for comments on 5.3. If not, what are the wishes of the council?
I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
Second.
Motion by Paul, second by Carrie. Any further discussion? If not, call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent section of the agenda, we have 13 items on the consent agenda. I have been asked to pull item 6.2-1 and 6.6. Any further additions to be pulled? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval on remaining items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Paul, second by Lisa. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to the first item pulled is ordinance number 5771, Ordinance Regulation of Pitbull Dogs Repealed. What are the wishes of the council?
I'd move for second reading and final passage of...
I'll second that.
Move by Carrie, seconded by Steve. Discussion. I know, Lisa, you asked to...
Yes, thank you.
Asked to have it pulled.
Mr. Mayor, I do have some comments, but I've also had calls and emails from constituents, and I know that there are some here tonight. I know it's not a public hearing, but I know you have been very clear in saying that people would always be given the opportunity to speak, so I'm hoping that you will allow them to come forward.
I will. And really, just as the only ground rule, I, you know, if there's new information, having the same thing said over and over, you know, I want to constructive, I want to move the conversation forward. So if there's, if there's a repeat of information, or if anybody can get up and speak, but just, I just want to make sure that, you know, the repeat of the same type of comments, I guess we don't need it. So anyways, with that, Lisa, do you want to add your comments first, or?
No, we'll hear from the constituents first.
So if there's anybody, if there's anybody who is in favor of lifting the band, raise your hand, and if you'd like to speak, you can. Okay, anybody who would wish to speak against the repeal, step forward and tell us your address?
No, just remember, just city.
Just city. I'm sorry, just city. Thank you, Carrie.
My name is Kim Albert. I live in Minnetonka, North Dakota. Is that all I'm supposed to say? I addressed this council the last time it was addressed, a few years back, the why I opposed allowing pit bulls in the city of Minnetonka, and I'm going to give you my reasons. In 2020, so the reason back then was because pit bulls were considered, you know, a vicious, dangerous dog, and it was safety, the safety of the community was put up, put front, first, in first place. Since then, nothing has changed. In 2020, 41 people were killed by dogs. 34 of them were identified as, you know, as what breed was that killed them. Some of them were not, they did not identify the breed. Of those that were identified, 79.4% of the people killed were killed by pit bulls. In 2021, 43 people were killed by dogs. 37 of those breeds were identified. 81.1% of the breeds identified that killed someone were pit bull. There's a dilemma. The pit bulls are attacked, attacked by people who mistreat the animals. But that truth is certainly, certainly a dilemma at best. Most of the pit bull deaths are family members or people close to the family. Examples, a seven-year-old girl in West Virginia killed this year by her grandparents' pit bull. A one-year-old girl in Mississippi killed by her aunt's pit bull. A 45-year-old woman in South Carolina killed by her own pit bull. A 66-year-old man in Illinois killed, killed by his own two pit bulls. 58-year-old woman in Alabama, who was a public health worker, who was killed by the pit bull owner of the person she was trying to service. These are, these and many others are examples of why pit bulls are very dangerous. Forbes Magazine did a 12-year study that ended in 2017. They listed the 10 most dangerous dogs in the, in the country. No shock, pit bulls are named number one. Pit bull rattlers are named number two. If you, they, pit bulls killed 284 people in that study. Rattlers killed 45. Those two breeds are 326% greater than the rest of the eight, all eight dangerous dog breeds identified in the study combined. 326% greater danger just by those two breeds. What is the most dangerous by research? What is the most, the dog most likely to turn on its owner? A pit bull. What is the most dangerous dog? A pit bull. What is the deadliest dog? A pit bull. The most responsible for fatal attacks? A pit bull. Most attacks on people? A pit bull. The bottom line is this. There is no, the very, any website you search will identify pit bull as the most dangerous dog in this country. There's no intelligent reason to put, bring pit bulls back into our, into this community. It's not safety, it's not for the betterment of this community, it is certainly putting more people at risk. I urge the council to reconsider their decision to allow them back in the city. Thank you.
Is there any other new information?
Council, Mayor, Tom?
Do you want to, do you want to pull the microphone down?
Okay. Hi, I'm Betty Clemente, and I live in Minnetonka. I'm a victim of, my three daughters watched their family dog get bit by a pit bull. Attacked it, come across the yard, chewed it up, thousands of dollars to put it back together. The dog spent three months in the hospital, and it came back in the house, went back outside. The dog came across the yard again and chewed it up again. The dog was put down. The girls are now older. They now still will not own a pit bull. They buy dogs because they're afraid of dogs. I've watched a daughter of mine who have, who's a doctor, who had a patient who had lost two toes to a pit bull just recently in June in Fargo. The girl, the baby was nine months old, the dog was a puppy, the dog, the baby kicked the water dish, and the dog attacked the child, took the two toes off. There are studies out there that says pit bulls are the number one dogs who attack kids and people. Just recently in Fargo, Bismarck, North Dakota, there was a grandma and a son, grandson, who was 12 years old, who got attacked by a pit bull in the yard. They were sitting there, and they're playing ball, and the guy came by with a pit bull, and just saw the ball in the little boy's hand, and came after the ball. So it doesn't matter where you're at in these, they just do not need to exist in the cities. You can have them out in the countries, because there's less people out there, and there's less people around them. I just don't believe we do not need pit bulls in Minnetonka. I live next door to a gentleman who has a pit bull, who has it as a service dog. The dog doesn't leave his yard, but if I mow my lawn, that dog follows me up and down the fence, trying to get across that fence, which is an eight-foot fence, but it's constantly just follows me across that fence, trying to get to me. Now, if he takes his dog out, he has to muzzle it. But it's a service dog, the dog never leaves his yard. He told me he searched a doctor till he gave him permission to have a service dog. So I go back to the story, I still don't believe we should, we still need to ban pit bulls in the city of Minnetonka. Thank you.
Kami and Eisen Zimmer, City of Minnetonka, Mayor and members of City Council. I'm writing in support of the repeal of 7-34 Regulation of Pitbull Dogs of the City of Minnetonka ordinances. During the last City Council meeting and this City Council meeting, you've heard facts and saw figures on both sides of the argument. However, I feel you are missing the personal aspect of 7-34. I have a lower limb disability, which technically lists me as handicap. My disability is progressive, meaning my issues and challenges will only get worse over time. In order to allow me more independence and a greater sense of security, I use a service dog. My current service dog has spent several months at a board and train facility, and I have spent years with him on tasks best suited to assist me. Therefore, my service dog is considered owner-trained and not programmed. Three years ago, when I began my search for a service dog, several programs recommended I look at pit bull or bully breeds. Why? Bully breeds are large enough and strong enough to pull a wheelchair, as well as offer physical support for those with balance and mobility issues. Due to my lower limb disability, I have a difficult time with balance, and as time goes on, my mobility will get worse. After only six years, I'm already looking into getting a wheelchair, and walking any distances causes extreme pain and may cause me to fall. In another six years, I may no longer have my leg, or I may be confined to a wheelchair permanently. My injury and disability are completely unique, and medical professionals don't know what the future may hold for me in terms of balance or mobility. Bully breeds are known for their loyalty, dedication, and intuitive nature. This makes them a natural for emotional and physical comfort for those with psychological conditions like PTSD and depression. Unfortunately, due to my accident and injury, I suffer from both PTSD and depression. Going into public places can trigger panic attacks, and people staring and pointing at me has kept me homebound for the majority of the past six years. Section 7-34 of the City of Minnetonka Code of Ordinances does allow for a bully breed service dog, as is required by the American with Disabilities Act. However, there are certain stipulations that come with this, and that must be imposed. First, the dog must be confined to my property within a secured and locked fence, not less than six feet in height. If not confined to my owner's property, securely inside a transport container, it must be muzzled and leashed under the control of the owner. The muzzle must be made of a suitable material and fitted and fastened over the dog's snout and mouth and head in a manner that prevents the dog from biting any person or animal, but allows room for the dog to breathe and pant. This makes tasks required of a service dog to assist in my independence must require use of its full mouth. How is a service dog going to pick up an object I dropped, such as my keys, my purse or wallet, or even if I lose my shoe out in public? This stipulation directly affects my ability, affects the ability of my service dog to perform its required tasks. Second, the animal must be leashed no longer than four length, four feet in length, and held at all times by the owner or another adult. A four-foot lead is not adequate for a service dog to successfully pull a wheelchair without harm to the occupant or the dog. A four-foot lead must be held by the owner or other adult, means I cannot take my service dog outside, when or if I am confined to a wheelchair. I routinely use arm crutches or assistive walking devices. My hands are full with equipment to keep me from falling on my face. By mandating I have physical control over my service dog, you are limiting me to where I can take my service dog, limiting his tasks, and discriminating against me and my disability. As Councilman Mark Janzer stated about his Labrador at the last meeting, he felt the need to rehome it once he moved to the city, as it was unfair to be, unfair to the dog to be cooped up inside all day. I would not be a responsible owner if I got a bully breed as a service dog with the stipulations the City of Minnetonka would enforce on us. The service dog would be unable to perform many of its tasks in public due to muzzles, leashes, and physical control by myself of its leash. As Councilman Janzer mentioned, dogs don't have the same rights and the same way that people do. That may be a correct statement, however, I have rights, and I have the right to have a service dog that is able to perform all of its tasks, not just those stipulated by an ordinance. Councilman Padraig Gula mentioned the statistics involved with 7-34, and the number should be zero, because pit bulls and bully breeds are not allowed within the city of Minnetonka. Even City Council members don't readily acknowledge that a pit bull, bully breed can be a service dog. How is the public supposed to react and accept a pit bull, bully breed, service dog when members of our own City Council deny their existence? While I can legally own a bully breed service dog, do you know what it's like walking out in places with a service dog that looks like a bully breed? Have you ever had people come up to you and scream that you have a pit bull in a public place, and they're calling the police? Now imagine your service dog is muzzled and on a four-foot lead. People are already afraid of bully breeds, and their fear would increase if they saw a dog muzzled. Service dog or not, Councilman Padraig Gula has stated over and over again his background in psychology and the importance of mental health. Every time I take my service dog into public, I am assaulted by individuals who feel the need to point my service dog looks like a bully breed. I can't legally own in the city limits, and that they are going to call I can't legally own in the city limits, and that they are going to call the police or state that their children need to be especially careful because my service dog is going to attack them. Even though my service dog is not a bully breed, all it takes is for him to look like one. I do live in fear that someone is going to walk by my residence and call animal control because they believe he looks like a bully breed. My service dog is trained in PTSD and anxiety response. He is trained in depressure therapy and to wake me when I'm having night terrors, among other things. Unfortunately, due to the stipulations of this ordinance, I am not comfortable taking him in public. This ordinance has helped reinforce the fear that bully breeds are aggressive, mean, and attack without provocation. So Mayor and City Council members, you may believe that it's just a dog and that it can't be discriminated against, but I'm here to tell you that there are individuals behind those dogs. There are individuals whose independence, self-confidence, the will to wake up every morning, and mental health depend on those dogs. My service dog is the reason I am still alive today. If my service dog did have bully breed DNA, what would happen when his time is done and he is ready to retire? Would I be forced to get rid of him? Technically, he would be identified as a pet and not an active service dog. Would I lose my lifeline and be forced to euthanize euthanize him because he fulfilled his duty as my service dog and now deserve to relax in retirement as a pet? When it is time for my service dog to retire from service, I sincerely hope this ordinance has been repealed, and I can get a service dog best suited towards my needs. In my case, a bully breed. Thank you.
Any other comments?
What a night to randomly come to City Hall. Oh my. So I think I have a different perspective from this. I was not planning to speak at all, but I'm in favor of the repeal. I was actually attacked by a pit bull when I was nineteen and had reconstructive surgery done. My brother owns four pit bulls. It was not by his pit bull, and they are the sweetest dogs you will ever meet. And I think that if we're going to put limits on what you can have in this city based on fear, then we have a really long way to go, because pit bulls are not the only thing that's feared. So we have to figure out where we're going to draw the line. So yes, I'm in favor of the repeal, because I also know Marines back at Camp Lejeune that I worked with that use them as service dogs and that served with them overseas. It is not about a bad breed, because you can look up a breed based on, like, they were saying, the most vicious dog or the most violent dog, but actually the most vicious dog are smaller dogs. More people are attacked by smaller dogs than bigger dogs. So we really do need to put a limit on what we're going to ban out of fear.
Any further comments? If not, any discussion on the council? Lisa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to say that over the past two weeks since we have this on first reading, knowing that this was on the agenda and that our, our first reading of our budget is on the agenda this evening, I've had more comments related to the repeal of the pit bull ordinance than I have the budget. That's how important people think that this ordinance is. You know, I, I don't think that any comments either way are going to convince someone, you know, to, to change their mind. I, I'm not anticipating that tonight. I, I wanted to have my voice heard one more time and just say that, again, I, I love dogs. I'm a dog owner, but I don't feel safe having pit bulls within our community. And I also wanted to give people that had comments to make the opportunity to say them.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, I just want to state that I'm, I'm, I also asked to have this polled, and I'm gonna, I remain unconvinced that the data presented leads to a conclusion that allowing pit bulls into the, into the city is a good or necessary action. If we're going to err on this, I would much rather err on the side of safety and less risk for the citizens. And so I'm going to stay consistent, vote against this today.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Steve.
Thanks. Like Mark and Lisa, I wanted to reiterate my concern about safety issues and explain that there's nothing about this dog that, you know, people certainly can find a friendly, cheerful, helpful dog. I am concerned, and, and I think several of the speakers who've spoken tonight have been correct in saying that other dog, other dog breeds attack and bite more often. I think the biggest biter is actually the proverbial family friend, the golden retriever. But what concern I have, and I don't want to repeat too much, is the ferocity of the attacks. Everything is fine, these are sweet, nice, lovable dogs, until they aren't. And when they aren't, that's where the concern comes in on my part. One of the inputs we've had was from a physician who is very concerned about the severity of the injuries that come with pit bull attacks and the disfigurement that can arise. And many of the people who are injured and killed, actually are young children or elderly people, really don't have the ability to get out of the way or to fight off an attack. It's also not at all unusual for a family member to be killed by a pit bull, which is really strange. You'd think they would have an attachment toward their family, and, and since dog family, but those fatalities are significant, and they're far out of line in terms of other dogs. As I said before, if we were to start at the beginning, I don't think a pit bull ordinance would be adequate. I think the dangerous animal, dog ordinance that we have is the best way to start. But we already have this extra measure of safety in place, and I think it does provide a little bit more safety, maybe not a lot, but when I look at the severity of the attacks and the fatalities that come, I just don't feel comfortable getting rid of that little bit extra measure of safety. So I'll be opposing the repeal.
Any comments? Carrie?
So I'm just going to repeat what I said two weeks ago. Do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better. Maya Angelou. Before the passage of seven-two-seven, which is our dangerous, dangerous animals prohibited law, the Minot City Council believed that the regulation of pit bull dogs was the best tool to address dangerous and potentially dangerous animals. However, three years of data indicate that the dangerous animals law is a better and more effective ordinance and a more precise tool for addressing the potential and actual dangerous behavior of dogs in Minot, regardless of breed. Therefore, the time has come to repeal the ineffective, vague, and inhumane law targeting the appearance of a dog versus the behavior of a dog. Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I, I don't think anybody up here takes these decisions lightly, and, and especially myself, I can speak for myself. Till I'm in Padraig Gula's comments, you know, these dogs are fine until they're not, right? I mean, again, with making things illegal, there's plenty of things that are illegal in our community, and anybody think that pit bulls aren't already in our community, they're lying to themselves. They are. Whether it's a service dog or a family pet, they are in our community. So to, to, to say that because there's, there shouldn't have been any bites because pit bulls aren't illegal, I, I guess I agree with you, but the fact of the matter, more proof that the pit bull ban probably isn't the most effective route to go. Some can be said about substances that are illegal or not illegal. Alcohol is fine until it's not. It's okay to have a drink, when you have too much, it's a bad thing. When it's abused, it, it's a bad thing. So again, I, I, I think more, you know, in the Forbes study that was cited earlier, it also states within that study, because I've read it, that the majority of animal bites, the owners have a felony conviction or a conviction in their history. That could be an contributing factor to, to dog bites and dog attacks. I, I don't necessarily know if, if the breed matters as much as the owner does and, and how a dog is treated. There was studies that were sent to us as, as the individuals who voted to repeal this with partial information. Dogs that were abused that attacked their owner, dogs that were neglected that attacked their owner. We still have as a responsibility as citizens, as dog owners, I'm a dog owner, I have been my entire life, to be a responsible citizen, to be a responsible dog owner. Otherwise, you shouldn't have a dog. So again, I, I'm going to support, I'm going to stay consistent as well. I, I, I think the city, I trust the citizens to, to utilize the dangerous dog ordinance that we have, and I think it'll be effective.
Thank you, Paul. Anything else? If not, call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
No.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Moving on to six point six. Steve, you asked that to be polled?
Yes, please.
What are the wishes of the council?
Move it.
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Paul. Second by Paul. Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that this is a very positive development from my perspective and really long overdue. We talk a lot about how government should be like business in some ways, and I agree with that, and this is one of those ways, and that is in terms of planning ahead for replacing your equipment and putting time and effort into it on a daily and weekly basis to make sure it looks good and make sure it runs well, and to report problems and try to fix them before the problems become too severe. I, again, I think this is way overdue and, and very, very good to see finally. The only question I have, I guess, is that I don't recall having public safety vehicles specifically mentioned here, and I wanted to ask Dan then if the police and fire people have their own policies, or if I just missed something in reading the, the proposed policy. It seemed to focus mostly on public works vehicles and other vehicles.
Mayor Ross, Alderman, Padraig Gula. I think, like, public safety for a police department, that would fall under like a passenger vehicle, and they would follow the same maintenance schedule as the rest of our passenger-type vehicles. I'm not sure, fire department, I, I believe they have their own mechanics. I think they do most of their own maintenance. I'm sure what their, I'm not sure what their maintenance schedule is.
And I'm aware of them having a significant maintenance schedule, and them inspecting the vehicles before every shift. I've been part of that even, I'm impressed. So it seems like all of our city vehicles now will be covered, no matter which department they're in.
Pretty much, yeah.
I think it's a very good thing to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser? Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Moving on to action items. Seven point one, public hearing on the 2023 preliminary annual budget. This is a time for public comments. So I will open the, open the public hearing for public comments on the 2023 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Larry Ballou. I reside at eight-twelve Bel Air Place here in Minot. Back in August, probably around the twenty-second or twenty-third, I received this in the mail. I assume each one of you received it, too. In the middle of the page, there are seven taxing entities, and if you move to the right side of each one of them, they all say increase, 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 increase. I'm going, going through this list, I was shocked to see my city property taxes are going to increase by one hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents per year, or nine sixty-nine per month. This represents a six point five-two percent increase over last year. And this is just the city's portion. My total property tax increase is eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-nine cents per month, or seventy-two ninety-five, oh, excuse me, eight seventy-five point thirty-nine per year, or seventy-two ninety-five per month. That's a seventeen point eight percent increase over last year. Now, I, I did examine your budget a little bit, and in the city manager's letter to the city council, he stated that the, each mill has increased slightly by five point one-four percent, and that's valuation, of course. Now, I do not consider a five point four-one percent increase slight, as my income has not increased. Even though your proposed budget, in your proposed budget, mills only increased by one point four-eight, my total increase is one hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents, and this is unacceptable to me. The city has increased property taxes in the last six years, just short of seventy percent. That's right, seventy percent. And if you go back to 2012, I think it's closer to three hundred percent. In my opinion, there are many areas in the budget that can be reduced, or at least looked at. I think twenty-three new employees are excessive, very excessive. A couple of examples are, why do we need an assistant city manager when we haven't had one since 1997? And what is the need for a community outreach specialist when, as far as I know, we have never had one? Why do we need one? And there are many more that I feel are not necessary. There are also many areas in the budget that have increased by double digits, and I don't think they're all necessary. I attended two of your budget discussions and was not happy with what I heard. The city council president, in his budget letter, suggested reductions, but then he left the money in the budget. There's no reductions there. One council member stated that he felt that this was the council's budget because you guys have been involved in it more this time than you have been in the past. If I remember the statement right, it's something like you guys started in May or something like that. That statement, there were several of you that shook your head, yeah, this is our budget. That statement indicated to me that this council has already made up his mind, which is wrong before the hearing from the public. I hope you reconsider and reduce his budget to a minimum of last year's level. I am a very angry and frustrated property owner by this exorbitant increase in one year. Many homeowners are retired and living on a fixed income. With inflation of around eight to nine percent, we will need an extra four hundred and sixty dollars a month just to maintain our current lifestyles. And that is before the property tax increase. If you add property tax to that, that's five hundred and thirty dollars a month. Now, like I said, that just means we, what we will have to do just to maintain. Now, what do we give up? Food, medicine, or what? Please consider retired, fixed-income people when considering this budget. Finally, something needs to be done to limit the impact on property taxes when valuations are increasing so dramatically. And what you can do as a city council, the total city council members can do is just stop raising our taxes. I hope that you guys will share this with your other taxing entities and consider this complaint in future actions. I thank you for your time. By the way, I'm opposed to your budget, so.
Any other comments? This is a public hearing. Seeking comments for our 2023 budget.
My name is Scott Samuelson. I live in Minot. My wife and I moved to Minot in 1989. We purchased a home in 1993 and have lived in the same neighborhood for twenty-nine years. The value of our home has increased by twenty-seven thousand dollars this year, according to the city assessment, as well as a twenty-two percent increase in our property tax. I cannot express to you guys tonight how I feel about that, because I might be asked to leave. In 1990, the Magic Fund was created with a focus on job creation, economic development, and expanding our tax base. Over thirty-two years, having spent in excess of sixty million dollars, not to include other tax breaks, incentives, grants, many other things to expand our tax base and economic growth, in all, we have spent over a hundred million dollars. Build it, and they will come. So all have we done? Population in Minot over the last thirty years has increased forty percent. This increase can be attributed to existing residents, starting families, and the oil boom of 2008 through 2014, which is the time of our highest increase in population. In the last twenty-nine years, my property taxes have increased three hundred and forty-seven percent. So that you didn't miss that, it's three hundred and forty-seven percent. People comment that school taxes are the biggest increase in property taxes. In the last 29 years, including our recent school bond, they have increased 269%. While the city portion of taxes has gone up 350%. Again, if you missed it, it's 350%. There is more to Minot than downtown. But it seems to me the city council and city leaders' only focus is downtown. For me, your emphasis is having the opposite effect. I don't need to shop downtown and spend money at downtown because they get enough taxpayer money. Minot continues to find ways of wasting money, in my opinion. One of the latest is the Wayfinding signage program. $1 million over three years so people can find places in Minot and downtown. I can do that today with my cellphone, which I bet everyone in this room has. I use it almost every day for my job to find places. I use it everywhere I travel to do the same. What's interesting, I realized, I wanted to find out about the Wayfinder signage program. So I Googled it on my phone, and it didn't cost the taxpayers of Minot anything for me to do that. This council has talked about getting ahead of what's going to happen with the buildings. Trinity is going to vacate downtown when they move to their new location. Those buildings are Trinity's property, and they are Trinity's problem. Not the city of Minot's problem, not the taxpayers' problem. In closing, rather than spending over $100 million on people that you wish were here, it's time to make Minot the best it can be for the citizens that live here. Which, by the way, are the friendliest and most caring people on the planet. "If you build it, they will come" is a quote from a fictional movie. It's not real. It doesn't work. Let's make the community of Minot the best it can be, great quality of life, and low taxes, and they will come. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I voted for all of you, except, of course, Mr. Striley, for obvious reason. Please don't make me regret my vote. You can do so much better. I will be paying attention, and I will not make the same mistake again. Thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you're listening.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Jeff Bookwitz, I live in Minot. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, fellow Manoceans. I'm not going to throw out any kind of crazy numbers or other stuff. I think Mr. Blue and Mr. Samuelson did a fine job of that, other than to say, one, and I know we're not here to discuss or alter or change any valuations of property, but really, mine went up 26.62%. That's $41,000 in additional value to a property that just isn't worth that, unless you guys want to write me a check. But, or anybody else, for that matter. But total taxes, with, with all of the seven, Mr. Blue, that are listed here that say increase, was 40.94%. $951.38 in additional taxes that it's proposed that I will be paying the next year. This is ludicrous. This is our money. And you folks are our representatives. And, and I've just heard these two stories tonight, but I've heard from plenty others that I've worked with, talked to and know as friends and colleagues that have similar stories. Although I think, I think my, my 41% tops the list so far, from what I heard, so. To say I'm miffed is to say the least. But folks, we need to get a budget that's under control. It's ridiculous, you know. I understand it costs money to run a city. I understand it costs money to run a government and have employees and provide the services that we need. So provide the services that we need. I think it was Mr. Allen, many years ago, that had a sign not too far over here that talked about champagne taxes. We're not willing to pay champagne taxes, so I am opposed to the budget.
Thank you. Any further comments? Last call for comments on the 2023 budget. If not, could we take a motion to close the meeting? Yeah.
I move that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley? Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to 7.1, the 2023 proposed annual, annual budget ordinance. What is the recommendation of the council? Paul?
Mayor, I move that we move approval on the recommended budget to include recommendations from the president's letter as followed. Removal of the recommended drug task force position, as well as removing two vacant police officer positions. Removal of proposed building and grounds worker, removal of both budgeted electrical inspection positions and contract with the state of North Dakota for electrical inspection services. And I move that additional $500,000 be moved to the road maintenance and allocated road maintenance backlog. And the remaining cost savings be set aside for future police department needs. And I'd also like to direct staff to bring forward budget amendments to allocate economic sales tax dollars towards the first phase of Wayfinding signage project, as well as remaining sales tax dollars towards facade improvement program.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Steve. Did you get that?
I have it written down.
I'm pretty sure it includes all your recommendations.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Paul?
I'll start it off. I understand the frustration with tax statements. I get them too. School bond is a good thing, in my opinion. These are all my opinions. It's moving our, our community forward. It's something that should have been done probably, I think it was tried, what, about eight years ago and failed? Probably should have been done 10 years prior to that, and it would cost a fraction of the, the amount that it's costing us today. You know, we, we get upset with the increased valuations of our property. We didn't come up with those numbers. Those are based off of sales comparisons in your neighborhoods. Be upset with your neighbor that sold their property, that sold their property at, at a peak price. Be mad at the banks for granting 2.5% sub 2% interest rates. That, that allowed, that allowed for that kind of spending. Those, those are the things, those are where the valuations come from. We didn't make those numbers up. You know, we get upset with things that this, that this body has tried in the past, in the 90s. We're trying something new, we're trying to be better, we're trying to improve. Definition of insanity, try the same thing over and over again and expect a different result. We're not going to have a different result. We have to, we have to try new things. We have to invest in, in the city of Minot. We have to be smart. Wayfinding signage is a sales tax. It's not coming from property tax. I understand the frustrations. I'm frustrated too. But we're making these investments in our future, we're making these investments in our children. I support this budget. And again, it's not perfect, never will be. There's always going to be somebody upset, and I understand that, so.
I just have a quick. I have more discussion, but just while we have your motion fresh on the table, would you be amenable to adding to the positions, cut the assistant city manager position? And I don't say that as a permanent, like, but for 2023, I just think more, I mean, I'm not opposed to this position, but given.
Can we take that in a separate motion? Can we take them separately?
Okay, if we, okay.
I think that would just be.
Okay, so let's do yours, okay, then we'll.
Yep.
Kelly, help us, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the main motion right now is Paul's motion, which was to approve the president's bud, the, the budget that was provided by the president, so, the president's budget. So in order to make modifications to that, a council member would have to do a motion to amend the president's budget, however you want to do that. And then you would vote on the amendment, and then ultimately, at the end, we'll vote on the main motion as amended or not amended. Does that make sense?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, so I'm going to start with a motion to amend the president's motion to also remove the assistant city manager position out of the 2023 budget.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Paul. Discussion? Discussion on the amendment. Carrie?
No, like I said, I, I don't think, you know, this is an unnecessary position, but for 2023, you know, I think we have, you know, really mindful of the feedback we've gotten. And I know all of us up here have been working hard to find areas that we can cut from in 2023. Comes back in 2024, I'm not going to say I'm going to oppose it, but for this year, I think, you know, actually agree with Roscoe in trying to get, you know, us as low, our mill, the city's mill as low as we can. And this is another way to, to help nudge us down a bit.
Roscoe?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, 23 positions is too much. I can't, I can't, I can't support that. 10 of them are arguably a must. You know, we look at the Biota Treatment Plant, the federal money to run the new Max Street. Some of these, the bus routes, there's two new bus routes that we're going to have to add. You know, the the fire, new fire station. Some of these are just must, we have to fund them, but not 23. Like, I, I cannot support adding 23 positions on top of 14 last year to the previous two years. So, I mean, as far as, I don't know if you want to take, I've got quite a few motions I want to make. So I don't know if you want me to just do them all in one whack or take them.
Still on my city manager.
On your city manager, yeah.
Get that done, and then you can motion away.
Sure, sure, yep, I support that.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've been up here for a lot of years, and I've gone through a lot of budgets. And early on, we would sit and start cherry picking out positions that we thought were expensive. I, I don't like doing that, I don't like micromanaging. We hire a city manager to manage the budget. I would say if we are looking at cuts, we look at a dollar amount or a mill, you know, something that would reduce the, the mill increase and say, here you go, city manager, work within these means. But I don't feel comfortable saying yes to this position and no to that position. I don't think that that's what we're called to do. I think that we're called to create a budget that is meaningful to our citizens and allow our city staff to work within those numbers.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other comments? Go ahead, Steve.
I also am kind of torn as to how into the weeds to get on this. And before I do that, I also should point out that I have a copy of my own personal property tax statement here, not sales tax, but my house valuation went up 4% last year. My city taxes, if the proposed budget is approved, would go up $57. The school portion of that would go up $393. I didn't take the time to figure out the percentages, but $57 a year extra to pay for the operation of the city seems to me like a very wise investment. I'm more than happy to pay that, I cheerfully will pay that. I would pay a multiple of that even if we could get better roads and better public safety protection. So I, you know, I, I know it, it affects me too. I guess my interpretation of it's a little bit different. In terms of the assistant city manager's position, I'm a little bit of a dilemma here because I think we do need to trust Harold as our city manager. And he's telling us that this position would really help him. And I'm also a little bit leery of, again, looking at it position by position. But I think I'm going to support this one, not so much because of the money, but because I don't think we've worked through yet with Harold how this position would be structured and how it would work. I have had extensive private discussions with him, I wrote him a very detailed memo. He's responded, I think, in a, in a pretty good fashion. And if you're listening, Harold, I really appreciate your frankness. But I don't think that the council as a whole has had that kind of discussion, has reached a consensus how we would use this person. I think there's some significant organizational issues. Like I said, we haven't had an assistant city manager for decades. Where would that person fit in? What if you're a department head and you don't like what the assistant city manager, who's your intermediate boss, agrees? Are you going to go around him or her to the city manager? What's the relationship between the aldermen and women and this individual going to be? I think those are, those are functional issues that I, I don't think we've, we've talked through yet. So I think I will be supporting Carrie's motion. And again, don't mean to express any disapproval of what Harold is suggesting. But I think the time isn't quite ripe yet. I think there needs to be a little bit more work put into it between the administration and the council as a whole in terms of figuring out how we make the best use of this position. Again, I'm, I'm reasonably comfortable what I'm hearing individually, but it can't just be an individual thing that I'm satisfied or reasonably satisfied. It has to be something we all buy into. And I don't think we've gotten to that point yet, I don't think we've had that level of a frank discussion. I think that's feasible, I think in the next few months, you know, we can probably do that. But I don't think that we're quite ready for that, because that has a major, has a major implication in terms of how the city government is structured. And also is a fair amount of money. So I will support Carrie's motion for that reason.
Any further comments? If not, call the roll on the amend, the amendment.
Yes, right now, we're voting to amend the original motion to include removing the assistant city manager position. Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
So the amendment moves forward. Now on to the original motion, which is the president's.
Well, I've got, I've got a fair amount of motions here too. Mr. Mayor, thank you. As far as, I'm going to take it by department here, Enterprise Fund versus General Fund. Make a motion to remove one light equipment operator, one heavy equipment operator. This would go on top of Paul's motion on the building and ground, so those would be the three positions. You know, if these were agreed to, that would be removed from that. And then, of course, 50% of the funds from the city manager piece. So that would be that department. I mean, I just think on top of the 14 last year, granted, they weren't all, obviously weren't all public works. To add four here, plus the other ones, plus two bus driver positions, plus an engineer in public works, I mean, what changes? Yes, I know the argument is, well, we got, we got.
Hate to interrupt, but we do need a second on the motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Sorry, thank you.
Steve seconded.
Thank you, Steve.
Now discussion.
Sorry about that. Get out of rampage here, but. So, I mean, trying to remember where I was at, but as far as that goes, yes, there's flood protection, maintenance needs, for sure. I agree with that. But four more positions, two in stormwater, and then, or excuse me, two there, and then two in the heavy equipment operator positions. I mean, I just think, what is, what is drastically going to change from right now, currently today, to next year? I don't, I don't see much, so I think giving 50% of those positions, I could support adding one of each of those. So that would be my reasons. I just don't think that the, the work justifies it going forward. Will it in the future? Maybe, after more, there's more maintenance needs on the flood protection and other property around town, maybe in 2024. But I don't see it in 2023.
Just clarification, Roscoe. So, so Paul's recommendation is ready, including a building and grounds worker, correct? And then yours would add one light equipment operator and one heavy equipment operator, is that right?
Correct, yep. And I was just going to take it as a Enterprise Fund and then go back to the General Fund.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Just to try to make it a little easier.
Okay.
We're adding those or removing?
Removing.
No, no, removing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there was, there was four, right? Four asked for and two being removed.
Yep, two storm sewer and then two storm sewer flood slash flood maintenance, so one of each of those.
One of each, okay.
There would still be two positions added, one in each area.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other discussion? Lisa?
Mr. Mayor, it'd be a question for Alderman Striley. With all of your motions together, what is the dollar amount savings that we're looking at?
1.2 million on the General Fund.
And that equates to what in mills?
That would be 4.1 decrease instead of a 1.48 increase. But it nets to be, the mill side, which I can't stand this mill side, nobody knows what mills are, it's dollars. Let's talk dollars, not mills. It's $1.8 million. It's $1.8 million increase. We like to gloss it and say, well, it's only 338,000, 35,000. I don't really care about mills, I care about dollars. So what this would do is get us to about a $500,000 increase total from a $1.8 million increase. Still should be further than that, but I think this is a reasonable compromise. And I can go through the rest of the General Fund after the Enterprise Fund here, because obviously that doesn't affect property taxes.
So, Mr. Mayor, again, I'll just go back to what I stated before. I don't think that it is our responsibility to pick and choose the positions. I think we need to set the dollar amount that we are comfortable with and then ask our city staff to make that determination.
Any other comments? On the motion, on the amendment? If not, call the roll.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Now back to the original motion.
And now, Mr. Mayor, I've got, I wanna focus, if I could, on the, the General Fund piece, the property tax piece. This is the utility bill side, so it doesn't address the property tax piece. You know, Paul's talked about the police department piece. The inspector pieces are, was, is already removed, actually, from the last time. So I would add one more position to that, excuse me, to the General Fund piece, because right now we're at a net of, let's see, that'd be two, five actually, or seven removals from the 23. Well, two existing with, with the inspectors plus these five, you know, that are now been identified. So I'd add a, removing the civil engineer from engineering, leaving the tech position for the less professional, you know, engineering are obviously doing a higher end stuff. So leaving the tech in engineering, but taking the civil engineering piece out of that. I just think, yes, there's more budget money going in there, but I just think you're hiring a, you know, this $100,000 position, there's a lot, it seems like, you know, engineers come in one or two, three years, then pop out. So to me, if we gotta spend a little bit of extra money, because obviously there's an engineering fee in the private sector, then if you're gonna have to bring that under the scope versus an internal one, to me, that just makes better long-term sense. Yes, I know they'll argue that, well, if we got 20 years worth of projects, this makes more sense. Well, we don't know what 20 years looks like, we don't know what next year looks like. Things change rapidly. So to me, funding the tech position makes, makes sense, but not the engineer. If we gotta pay a little bit more on a project versus a permanent staff, I still think we're better off to remove that position at this time.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Roscoe, but.
Second, second.
Carrie.
Sorry, I did it again.
Any further discussion?
So, again, is this sort of like just in 2023? Like, this is not something that, you know, is set in stone, certainly if circumstances change, you know, all of a sudden, you know, the engineering department can find all these good engineers, would you be open to, you know, Mr. Meyer coming and asking for a budget amendment if, you know, halfway through 2023, it's looking dicey and he has, like, I found somebody who I think could be good?
Mr. Mayor, Carrie, absolutely. I guess I don't get the, it seems like the budget amendment is like a scary thing. I don't know why that would be a scary thing. I mean, things change, you can't, you can't predict what's gonna happen next year. I have absolutely no problem with budget amendments. I know that's maybe not how it has been in the past, but to me, we'll know a heck of a lot more in first quarter next year. I mean, you know, arguably, we've got runaway inflation, interest rates on the rise. Has it really hit North Dakota yet? No, not as bad as other states. It's going to likely, so, I mean, I think we need to be as nimble as possible. And if, if things change next year, add a position, then I have no problem with that. I just think making some of these decisions now, you know, why do we need 23 on top of 14 last year? Nothing's really changed that much in the city. We are growing, for sure, but to add, you know, we're talking 20, well, we're not gonna do 23, but I mean, 30 some positions in two years, that doesn't make sense to me. So this is just a wait-and-see approach, and yeah, I have no problem with that. Carrie?
Thank you.
Any other comments? Lisa?
And I'll just say again, Mr. Mayor, I'm not opposed to some of these cuts, I'm really not. I'm listening to the constituents, I understand that we need to look at this, I don't like the process.
Steve, you had, did you have, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, thank you, it was more my mind than my hand. But, no, I really appreciate what you're saying, Roscoe. I think one thing I wanna publicly call out is this dislike of yours about us always talking about mills. I think you're right, nobody understands what they really are, I think it's dollars ultimately. And I'm really glad you're saying that, I agree with you totally on that. And I think that's what we should be looking at. I also am pleased with the flexibility. And I think in, in terms of if the staff come to us and say, look, you know, we have a hot candidate, our workload really is going up. Because I think you correctly are pointing out that the economy nationally is not the greatest, and there's a lot of flux and change. And, you know, if you'd be willing to see this put back into the budget mid-year, if we need it, I, I, that's kinda convinced me, you won my vote on that one.
Anything else? If not, let's call the roll on the amend.
Motion to amend.
The motion to amend. Thanks, Paul.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Mayor, one more on a, it's on a fund, so on the economic development side, the request came in, you know, at 533,770. I think we should fund that in its entirety versus the 435. Now, this is, sales tax dollars comes out of the, what gets dumped into the magic fund at the end, so this isn't a property tax piece, but, I mean, I think where the.
We need a second.
Oh, jeez.
Second.
Carrie. Thank you, Carrie.
I promise, the fourth time, I'll learn. A motion to increase the MACEDC from 435 to 533,770, which was their request piece, so that would be the motion.
Second by Carrie.
Thank you. I apologize again, not very good learner, I guess. And the reason for that, I mean, economic development, new leadership there, I think everybody's clicking on the same page right now, we're all moving forward, I think, together, whether it be the chamber, whether it be city or visit mine, I mean, I think we've got an opportunity here to really accelerate what we do from an economic development standpoint in a whole new direction, which we're going. And it's gonna be, it's rapidly changing. So to me, this makes sense. Workforce development is a huge issue, huge, huge issue, and this is one of the areas they're focusing on. So the, this additional money would be for that area, for a position in that area, workforce development, which, you know, ask anybody, I mean, there is nobody out there, everybody's hiring, nobody can find people. So to me, that's a really critical piece. It ties into daycare, childcare, that's a workforce issue, development issue. You know, it used to be something totally different a couple of years ago, but now it's really a workforce development issue. So to me, I think funding a new leadership there, I think this just makes sense. Like I said, it's, it just comes out of what doesn't end up in the magic fund, so no General Fund, I just think it makes sense at this time.
Thank you, Roscoe, Carrie.
So, I thought I was opposed to this, but having thought more about what a workplace development person does, particularly that childcare and daycare piece, I mean, I haven't hidden that I think a large part of our labor crisis in this city is because of a lack of affordable childcare options. And I think I'm confident that Brecka and the leadership at the chamber and in their involvement with the governor's task force or roundtable on these childcare issues has made this a top priority for the chamber and for a potentially new position. So, given that, I want to support that increase for that position.
Thank you, Carrie. Any further comments? Paul?
Just clarification, was that, Roscoe, that was for what workforce development position within MACEDC?
Yeah, what they're, Mr. Mayor, Paul, what they're looking at doing is adding a staff member to there, one of them specifically in that, I can't remember what the other one is, but this would, this would just increase, it would not cover the full cost, of, you know, of, of all of their staff there by any stretch. But this would just be additional support for their activities, which would include that, yes.
No further, Paul?
Just continuation on that, again, I'm not opposed to this, I think in its, in the spirit of this, this, I'd like to see MACEDC come and present that to us, I think it should be done through a budget amendment process rather than reallocation in an amendment into this budget. I think that was kinda actually through my conversations with Mr. Lakefield and, and city manager, that when we talk about sales tax reallocations, they're supposed to remain the way they are and it's to be moved through a budget amendment process. Again, I think it's actually a great motion, I think it's a great idea, I think the process is flawed in, in this. I think I'd rather see it as a budget amendment in our next meeting.
And I'm fine with that, if that's, if that's how it has to be. And then, you know, there's other funds too that, the sales tax infrastructure fund, we'll get into that here later too, but, so would that need a separate amendment to then? So instead of, and the reason I say that is, instead of taking the health savings money and then diverting that to road, what I would like to see is a sales infrastructure fund, which is set up for that, just take an extra half a million from that. And then pass the general fund savings for the health insurance savings of 660,700 down to the taxpayer. And maybe Mr. Lakeville can explain that.
Can we stay on the amendment?
Yes, but I was just asking, is that, is that the same thing we're talking about here?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add a little bit of clarification. In the proposed budget, there is funding included in there for the operation of MACEDC, and that, that amount can be changed during this budget process. The allocation of the sales tax, the percentages of each penny that go to the different buckets, that is established in ordinance, and that would have to be done through a separate process if we wanted to change the percentages. But how you allocate those dollars in the budget can be done at this time, but they also can be changed at the future, at any point in the future as well, through an amendment process.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm not advocating changing any of the allocations, just simply, you know, what's the amount roughly, 1.7 is the estimated generate, or the amount that 'll generate from that, so then you just deduct an extra 98,000 from that, correct? And then whatever's left over dumps into the magic fund. Is that, is that correct?
Essentially, that's the correct process, yes.
So there would be money for it, then?
That's correct.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions, Dave?
No, but are you gonna withdraw, are we gonna, are you gonna withdraw the motion and then just deal with it?
I got a question for Dave, actually.
Oh, Dave.
Sorry, Dave.
Dave, you should just probably sit up right here.
So, Dave, we can, through, in this process, we can reallocate those funds to, to MACEDC. Versus, when we talked in the meeting, previously discussing the, discussing the budget, you know, like the facade improvement program, wayfinding signage, those are gonna be brought with a budget amendment. How is this different?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, they can be relocated to MACEDC as long as it meets the criteria for that portion of sales tax, which is, it falls under the general economic development, there's some different criteria, but you can move it around as long as it stays for the purpose inside of that bucket in the ordinance.
Okay, perfect.
So we can.
So I'll keep my motion, then.
Yeah, you can keep it, then.
Any other discussion? Yes, Steve?
Thank you. I originally was not gonna favor this because I just don't know in good conscience, I can sacrifice some of the social service needs. MACA, for example, I think, which I think helps with economic development, especially the project B, the shelter for low income and emergency housing needs. But they have managed to work out a fundraising project, so they will be able to go ahead, and I think that's important. I can't sacrifice, again, basic emergency human shelter needs to economic development, but that's not before us anymore, so I will be supporting that motion. I think economic development, although people quibble about it, really is critical to the growth of our community and the welfare of our community. And I especially am pleased with the emphasis on, if you will, the soft side of it, in particular, the need for good quality childcare in the community. I agree very much with Carrie that right now is one of the biggest factors we have in not being able to grow our community and our job market. And if the state finally looks like it's starting to get a little bit serious about this, is doing that, I think we should join them. So I think supporting a local position, trying to get workforce development, the importance it needs is worth, worth the support.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments? If not, let's call the roll on the motion to amend.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Can I jump in with an amendment, Roscoe?
Yeah, go ahead. Then I got one more.
That one prompted in your comments, no. So we did, we did, I think, some of the community grants, we cut and stuff, I would like to restore them. I have been doing a lot of research. Okay, so first, let me preface this, oh, I make my motion.
Make a motion to restore?
I make a motion, I make a motion to remove from the budget the 469,775 allotted for community grants. And to make ARPA, our ARPA funds, to contribute to the community grants 512,500, which restores the original funding requests from the Commission on Aging, First District Healthcare, and MACA.
Second.
Okay, now I can talk. So, I mean, you know, we're looking for ways to get that General Fund, which is property tax generated, you know, down. The city has received 7.5 million dollars in ARPA funds, which is COVID relief. We have most of that earmarked, and I don't disagree with it, for the puppy dog Cooley. The puppy dog Cooley in, the requirements for it for 2023 are funded, ARPA's going to that. But I would like to see some of that money that was passed by Congress that was intended to help industries and organizations and public health entities impacted by COVID. And I couldn't think of three more organizations that, you know, the Commission on Aging, First District, and MACA as being tremendously impacted by COVID. FDHU for stepping up and helping our entire county and the counties it serves have a COVID response. You know, Maryland Council on the Arts is a small organization that fundraising was hit, and Commission on Aging, we've heard again and again from Roger and Steve being on that board, how COVID impacted that. So since, you know, on the one hand, we're going to increase funds for the chamber, which I'm totally in support of, I think it would be befitting then to also increase and take, remove it from the General Fund and take it out of the ARPA fund for those three organizations.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
I was not present at the meeting where the cuts were made to First District Health Unit and Council on Aging and so forth. I was at my mom's funeral, but, but I, I would have disagreed with the kind of peanut butter spread approach of taking X amount of dollars on a percentage basis from those organizations. Going back a couple of years ago, for example, First District Health Unit was changed from essentially a grant to a fee-for-services basis contract kind of an approach. And so, you know, they, they do things for the city, water testing and various things like that, and I think to, you know, to arbitrarily say, we're only gonna get, we're gonna give you X amount of dollars less and not have worked out what reduction in services there would be, I think is a mistake. So while. while, you know, I generally am in favor of this amendment, I guess my question would be just to be sure that, and Carrie, I would presume you did this, to make sure that the the ARPA funds are available and can be used for this purpose.
Thank you, Mark. Dave?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a few concerns regarding utilizing ARPA funds for some of these, replacing some of these other funds. And the rules are somewhat specific in, although community health is one of the categories that those funds can be used for, it's also pretty specific on what it can be used for within those broader categories. So, for example, identifying COVID-19, excuse me here.
So I have the final rule that was promulgated by the Department of Treasury for that. And so it's it's the, it was January 2022, so every federal law has to have a final rule. And vaccination programs, including vaccine incentives of vaccine sites, testing programs, equipment insights, there is all of these in the federal rule that I believe about 75% of them are within the purview of First District's spending.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, while that may be correct, there are also other things identified in the contract with First District Health Unit that may be outside of the scope of that. So those funds follow through to the city. We would have to ensure that they're used properly through essentially a subrecipient type of agreement. And that would mean that some of those things that are being funded through that agreement with First District Health Unit, if they're deemed not eligible for ARPA funding, we would have to go without them in that agreement or come up with another funding source to pay for that. In in addition, further on into future years, we know that we are going to have a shortfall in this identified infrastructure project. So essentially, if we move money away or use ARPA dollars in 2023 budget for a different function, we will have to go and find those additional funds in next year or the year after budget to complete this project, or we'd have to forego that project and spend the bulk of those or the remainder of those funds on something else that qualifies.
So the puppy dog Cooley is estimated to cost $16 million, correct?
I believe that's
So even if we used 100% of our ARPA money, that 7.5 million, we're still really short. We're going to have to find that gap somewhere. And taking 740, you know, like, like, we're not talking, like, gutting the program, right? But we still are going to be quite short between 16 million and 7 million.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman or Alderwoman Evans, there are additional funds too that are contemplated in that project, including storm sewer development funds and other funding sources to to make up that difference. Since we initially considered this project, the cost of that project has the estimate has gone up substantially. So that can change now if things come back to a more normal building scenario. We are seeing some of those costs retreat a little bit, so that can affect that estimate as well. If we push it further into the future, my guess is it will continue to be more and more expensive.
But we're still $9 million short, even because we're getting no more ARPA money, correct? This is it?
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, that is correct, but I believe it was in the neighborhood of about $4 million of storm sewer development, the funds that we have identified as well.
So I'm talking about 500,000? Out of the 7.5 million, 512,000?
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, that that's correct. We would just be moving money around. My next concern is to make sure that all of those uses that you're proposing would qualify. And the First District Health Unit was just one of them, and that is probably the easiest of those recipients to fit into the ARPA funding scenario. I think it's pretty difficult to argue that Council of the Arts would fit into the public health category for ARPA, so I don't
But there's assistance to nonprofits in the final rule, which both the Commission on Aging is a 501(c)(3) and MACA is. So impacted nonprofits who have seen decreased revenue, financial insecurity, increased costs are eligible, and they have to be 501(c)(3) or 50(c)(19). And Commission of Aging and MACA are both 501(c)(3).
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, I think you're correct, but we would have to be able to show the decreased revenue and those types of things to come along to ensure that they qualify. And I don't know at this point if they do.
Well, I mean, we have the executive director of MACA, who, Justin, I don't know, could you show a decrease in revenue for for MACA due to COVID?
Yes, I can have to show a decrease in revenue. I've also dealt with ARPA, the ARPA funds in the past and know some of those rules.
Okay.
There are places for us to qualify, certainly.
And Lisa Clude, I don't want to put you on the spot, but knowing what you proposed to us, right, for the services, the contract we would have with you, what roughly, I mean, I'm not going to, you know, ask you precisely, what of the 318,000, what portion of that, is it half, is it more than half, would you think be eligible to be included under the provisions that ARPA allows public health?
My I would say at least half. The water testing, some of the sewer testing and things like that that we're doing for the cities. But certainly vaccination, those types of things would would fit in there.
Do you happen to remember roughly how much the water testing was?
I can let, I have that. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, and
No, you weren't expecting this. I'm
So I have with, sorry, I just looked down and marked Janser as Hi, Mark. Okay. Let's see, the water testing, here it is. Okay, ask your question one more time.
Councilmen
So if we had to back out, so let's say if for out of your 318,000
Correct.
If we had to back out and do take some money from the general fund for stuff that the the COVID-related money wouldn't cover, water testing probably being one of those areas, I think.
Correct. Okay, so with that, I had 30. There we go. I just want to make sure I give you the correct number.
Mr. Mayor, while Lisa looks back, can I just ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
We would remove this from the general fund, this allocation, and then would that money still be levied that would be removed?
No, we would get it. Nope, we would, it'd be removed.
Reduce that from the mill. Okay.
Yep. But we may have to not reduce it, like, depending upon what figure she gives us, I may like say, like, out of 318, like, we're only going to, you know, we should only take maybe 250, you know, and we have to leave some in if it's not going to cover all of what the district does for the city in its contract.
Okay, so you would have 17,000, 50 times, 200, about 25,000, 25,000 on wastewater tests, and your water tests, 721, about 22,000. I'm looking at 700 tests at about 30, well, 35, about 24,000 with your vaccinations.
But that would be part of the
Yep, we could do that under there, so
So a 22, 22,000, 25, and a 24,000?
Correct.
So that would take us down to about 247,000 of your 318 request is most likely covered under the the final rule of the Department of Treasury for COVID-related?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm familiar with that, but I didn't have, I didn't come prepared very to answer all those, so.
So that would take us 53 and 18 is one. That would mean we'd have to leave about 61,000 in the general fund. Roscoe, are you?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Carrie, if I could, I mean, of the public works positions that weren't funded, it was 200,770. So to me, $47,000, they can find that in their budget, easily find that in their budget. So I would say, don't worry about the excess. That can be covered just out of their own budget operating for the tests.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know we're talking 2023, and I don't want to get into the weeds very much, but ARPA is only going to cover 2023. What happens in 2024?
That's a discussion for another time.
Who's that? Harold, would you like to jump in?
Yeah, so my question is basically along the same lines as what Lisa's doing. So her question was Alderwoman Olson, and that is, you know, we can use ARPA funds to provide one-time relief, but if you're going to decrease the mill levy, that's going to expound the problems for next year's budget when you try to find room to restore that $500,000 of funding for that community funding, because you're cutting it out of the general fund. So that's my concern with that approach at this point. I don't necessarily disagree with what you're trying to get to at the end, if you want to restore funding. I think you've made enough cuts tonight that you can do that out of the general fund. But, you know, you're going to make an effort to decrease general fund mill levy this year, which if that's what you want to do, that's your prerogative. But next year, you're either going to have to keep the mill levy the same and cut other operational expenses to add that money back in, or you're going to be back to raising property taxes again at the mill levy to make up that difference again. So just a point of consideration for the councils, you're deliberating through this.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Roscoe.
Thank you. One thing that has dramatically changed since this budget was put into place, and I mean dramatically changed, is the the interest rates that we're getting paid on our money, this the taxpayer money that's sitting in banks. You know, it used to be .2 basis points, .3 basis points. All of that is over 2% now. So there is millions of dollars that this city's going to generate in interest income that they otherwise didn't this year for the remainder of this year, and, you know, in all likelihood, all of next year. I'm talking millions upon millions of dollars. So there is plenty of money, I think, that is above, what should we call it, money that's not in this budget that's actually going to be in this budget, just based on that single fact alone. Take 2% times millions of dollars versus .2. It's substantial. So what I'm saying is we're going to have a buffer.
Thank you, Harold. Paul?
And I don't disagree with anything Roscoe said. My concerns would be the same with Harold and and Lisa, that I just don't know if this is the best practice to get into, to remove something from reliable and a consistent revenue source. I have no problem, I think, supplementing to get to restoring funding. I think that's more appropriate. You know, we've we've cut from departments, we've cut from department heads, we've cut from public safety. We've asked our community partners and charitable organizations to do the same. We've done that through this process. I I have no problem restoring that funding, but I would be more, I won't support it as it is. I would I would much rather support it, using ARPA funds to supplement that that shortfall from which we cut. I would be more amenable to that. I think that's more appropriate versus removing it, $500,000 excess this year, and then having to find that fund, that that money next year throughout the process. Again, I just, I don't like it.
Any further discussion?
I think I might be open to that. So that would mean, you know, we would still have the the 469,775 in our our budget, our 2023 budget, and then taking a much smaller amount out of ARPA that would restore Commission on Aging to the 154,000, 154,000, FDHU to 318,000, and MACA to 40,000.
Yeah, if I may, we did that before. We supplemented, not not this process, but we supplemented, you know, fixed incomes. And I have to imagine, and First District, MACA, Commission on Aging, I'm not going to put you guys on the spot, but I assume you guys are coming back next year through the same process. And if we remove that funding, we have to go back to taxpayers and find those dollars later. I would rather, you know, we did that, this body did that not too long ago and supplemented fixed incomes and the cost running government of sales tax. It was variable. And when we remove that variable revenue source, we had to to supplement it back into property taxes, and we saw property tax increases double-digit. So so again, I would be more amenable to supplementing and that that shortfall with with ARPA funds versus completely substituting them.
Okay, Michael, I'm going to withdraw that motion and make a new one. So I'm going to make a motion to
Does the second have to agree to draw the motion?
Well, no, I've removed the motion.
Yeah, I'll remove my second.
Does he have to?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Evans, technically, the motion is on the floor, so it has to be voted on, voted down, and then you can make your new motion.
Okay.
It's already been discussed.
Once you give a motion, it's it's everybody's motion.
We all own it?
We all own it. So there's no further discussion. So call the roll on the motion to amend.
Evans?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Pradagula?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Striley?
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion to keep the community grants level in the proposed budget at 469,775 and to, and I haven't done the numbers. Is Roscoe calculating them right there as we speak? The shortfall for the Commission on Aging, there, so whatever the shortfall is between what we have in our budget and 154,000 for Commission on Aging, 318,000 for First District, and 40,000 for MACA, and whatever the shortfall is between that and the 469,000 allotting ARPA funds for that shortfall.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Carrie, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? Paul?
I'll support this. Again, I, we've asked department heads, community partners to reduce our budget and try to find cost savings. So again, using this this one-time revenue source in ARPA funds, I think, is more appropriate than removing it completely, subsidizing with that, and then having to come back to the taxpayers next year and reply and and ask for it again. So so again, I think this is more appropriate. I'll support it.
Any further discussion? If not, call the roll on the motion to amend.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Pradagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Back to the original motion. Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul, would you be amenable to do, instead of using healthcare savings for the infrastructure, the 500,000, taking it from the sales tax infrastructure fund, which has a balance, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, of roughly $4 million? You know, so I'd reduce that fund. It's a fund with cash sitting in it right now versus not returning some of the healthcare savings back, you know, through the mill levy.
Is that a motion?
Sorry, gosh, I did it again. That's a motion, yes.
Second.
Second, second by Steve?
Second.
Second by Steve? Discussion?
I did it again, so
Play it one more time, Ross.
So, and and maybe Dave's a heck of a lot smarter than me, but the there's a sales tax infrastructure fund that has money in it. You know, there's projects that get funded out of that. It's my understanding there's about 4 million, 4.1 million roughly in there. So instead of, you know, I'd like to see the healthcare piece taken off the property tax number, not reallocated. So this is a way to, instead of that, you're just taking money from the fund that already exists and that has money in it to beef up the road budget, which I think is a great investment.
So the healthcare, the this this healthcare savings would go where? To this sales tax infrastructure fund?
Mr. Mayor and Carrie, so he had, Paul had originally said the savings from that would be used to fund the increase in the road. All I'm saying is, let's talk about that next. But this, I'm saying, would he be amenable to taking it from a fund that's already out there?
Oh, to put to the roads?
To increase from To increase from 2 to 2.5 million, the road increase budget.
And the healthcare savings is a reduction in the general fund?
Correct, but that's not part of my motion quite yet. I was just trying to explain what his, you know, his recommendation, what, how he used the funds. I'm saying, let's not do that. Let's take them from the cash account we already have called the sales tax infrastructure fund.
Alderman Striley?
Mr.
Mayor Ross?
Go ahead.
I'm really confused as to what this amendment to the motion is going to be. So can we just?
So in Paul's motion, there's 663,000, 660,700 roughly is the is the healthcare savings that we're going to get, because the estimate was 10%, and we're at zero. We're at negative two, actually. So instead of using that money, let's use money that we already have in the bank in the sales tax infrastructure fund piece. If that makes sense.
So is your motion to to take the, to use money from the Magic Fund Infrastructure Fund to fund the roads?
To fund Paul's 500,000 increase, yep.
But is that one of those sales tax ones that we have to do separately?
Not on allocations, I don't believe, because it's for the same purpose. It's infrastructure, if I'm not mistaken. Dave can tell me I'm wrong, though.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. I just want to clarify a couple of things. Because you'd acted at a previous meeting to remove the electrical inspectors and had voted on that, gave us that direction, those two positions were removed from the budget already. And along with that, we've removed the cost of their benefits as well. Now, those funds are still remaining. They just go back to, they would go back to whatever that is allocated for, or whatever you want to use these cost savings for. So what we have remaining after removing those two positions due to the decrease in costs is 400, roughly 451,344 of general fund dollars. In addition, we can take those dollars from sales tax infrastructure and allocate those towards the road projects. That would be something that would qualify under those approved uses under the ordinance, so that is possible. And then we just have to decide if we're going to use that funding source, then what we're going to do with the remaining funds that we have, if we are going to levy those or not. So I want to make sure that we're all clear when we're all done.
Would it make more sense, sorry, would it make more sense for Roscoe's motion to include reallocating funds within that fund as well as what to do with the cost savings? Instead of taking it from cost savings and taking it from the the sales tax, would it make more sense to have them be under one motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, maybe the cleanest way to do this would be to make the motion to fund the increase in the road maintenance from sales tax dollars. And then when we're done, we can address what we'd have left over for the general fund levy and give us some direction on what we want to do with that, if we want to allocate that to some other project in the future or reduce the mill levy.
I agree.
Okay, don't go too far.
So Dave, I have a question. I knew. He told you not to go. What, so where would that, so in the streets and roads, like where would that 500,000 go into?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Evans, that would be the street improvement object.
Okay, just so we're clear. Okay.
Yes, and it's in the engineering department.
Engineering, okay. Okay. So just, maybe we should make the motion very clear, right? So is the motion, the sales tax infrastructure fund will add 500,000 K to the road maintenance? What's it called?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, perhaps the cleanest way to make that motion would be to increase the street maintenance fund by X number of dollars and fund it from sales tax infrastructure.
And it's called the Road Maintenance Fund, and it's in the engineering budget?
Street improvements.
Street improvement, okay.
So, so we do have an amended motion on the floor. What is that motion?
And Roscoe, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but it would be, the first motion that you used to amend that had a second was taking the healthcare savings and put of the 500,000 in healthcare savings, remove that, reduce that, and take the 500,000 that we wanted for road street improvements from sales tax infrastructure.
Yeah, I think that was the original motion. I think the cleanest, like David indicated, yeah, that's fine. Just vote that down. I'll do a super clean one.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Striley? Evans?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padrigula?
No.
Ross?
No.
So, Mr. Mayor, now the motion would be to use sales tax infrastructure funds to fund an increase in the street budget, which is presently at 200, 2 million to 2.5 million. So that extra 500,000 would come from that fund.
Second.
Motion by Roscoe, second by Carrie. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And so, Mr. Mayor, now it gets to the the healthcare piece, what to do with that savings. Because in Paul's budget, he had spent, you know, reallocated those funds. I would like to see that removed from the budget altogether. And and it's a savings to us, to the the city. I think that should be shared on the mill levy piece, since we didn't remove the previous 500 in the grants in First District Health. I think this needs to be done. It's enterprise funds, 50% and 50% general. So I'd like to see that removed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve, moved by Roscoe, second by Steve?
Question for Roscoe. Is this, but there's still the 2% reduction, right, in premiums? That, so this is not going to that? Right?
No. And again, Dave can correct us if we're wrong, but the budget originally called for a 10% increase, and there was a negative 2% decrease.
Right.
So to hold even, I believe you're at 660,000 roughly. 50% general fund, 50% enterprise funds. Well, there's a 2% there, too.
Which is about 120.
Be about 125, 120,000.
I'm talking about that.
Nope.
I have ideas for that. Okay.
Nope. And and I mean, that number, we are going to see a 2% at least reduction. Here, it could be substantially more than that, actually. So, I mean, there is that real number that's sitting out there. I mean, it it's going to be 2% less.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of returning this savings and health insurance premiums to the taxpayers. I think I've given this a lot of thought and, you know, which is not to say that Paul's idea of using it to increase the street maintenance fund was a bad idea, or to put it aside for the, you know, future needs of the police department, you know, not terrible ideas. But this was a, this was a, not tax dollars that we chose to collect. It was a savings off of a wrong estimate. Had Harold gotten word of the actual health insurance information 48 hours earlier, there's a good chance this money wouldn't have been in the budget in the first place. At at the previous, or at a previous meeting, when this came to light, I think Roscoe made a motion to simply reduce the budget by that amount right then. And that wasn't a bad instinct. I think that, I think this money needs to go back to the taxpayers. And when when we need to levy the tax and increase it for something, I think then we've got some credibility. But I think this this needs to go back to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anything else? If not, call the roll on the amended motion to amend.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, on the same topic, sort of. So I wanted, motion. Motion is to that savings, that 2% reduction that is now going back to the general fund, which is about 120,000. I would like to have that allocate, my motion is to increase the city's contribution to both the family and single independent coverage, which is currently, we pay 80% of a staff member's family and 90% plus one. It's just a very modest increase, but I believe we have to start somewhere. 82% increase for family, from 80 to 82, and for single plus dependent, 90 to 92%. And that would come to about 116,000. Well, within that 120, that that 2% reduction. So I think it's, okay, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? Roscoe?
Thanks, Tom. Mr. Mayor, I think that's a fair, fair idea. What I'd like to have included, I suppose I have to make another motion, but what I'd really like to see, though, and I think it's happening now, but we want to make sure it's followed through on, in the latter years. Every year, this thing should be bid. Every benefit we have, every single year should be bid. Like, that is just straight up good business. So I think, and sounds like it's probably going to happen. But what I really would like to see, too, is a focus on finding the best health health plan. And I don't know if we need a committee for this in the future. That's another discussion. But looking at all of them, the high deductible plan is the best plan for the city, and it's absolutely the best plan for the employee. They save a tremendous amount of money out of their paycheck each month. Your deductible is higher, would be higher, for sure. But the city's got over $2 million in a health reserve account right now. That could, that could ease the transition into a health, a high deductible plan. That's what everybody's going to. It makes the most budget sense, and it really gives the employees a lot of money in the health savings account to do whatever they want with it. If they're healthy and they don't go to the doctor, it builds up as a savings account. So I think that discussion has to happen. Is it too late to do it this year? Probably. But for 2024, it's just essential, I think, that there's a really thorough look at the health piece to this of the city, as well as the deductibles. In my opinion, the deductibles are way too low.
Any other discussion? Carrie?
So this goes back to Harold. I believe you introduced this idea, and I really hope we can use 2023. It's à la carte kind of menu, right, for, Harold, am I making this up? Wasn't, was it your idea? Are you?
Alderman Evans, yes, during the council strategic planning retreat back in June, I suggest I presented a presentation from SGR Consulting, presenting the idea of potentially offering a menu of benefits for employees. I will tell you, that is a, and that's one of the things I was hoping to visit with some consultants and colleagues here about, at the City Manager Conference here in Ohio. But right now, that's new thinking. I'm not aware of any city that does that. So we're going to be creating that from scratch. It's going to take some time to figure out, and then in addition, how we how we pay for that. So there's a potential of it, but it may take some some consulting to help make that, make that proposal and do the due diligence and do the actual real numbers and all those kinds of things.
So, yeah, I just wanted to to bring that up, Roscoe, just because Harold had brought this idea up, and I think it's something in 2023. Like, I don't know if we can form a committee or something, but really, looking at, like you said, getting the most bang for our buck for our city dollars and the benefits we give to employees and, you know, maybe moving to to something like that. But I think there's a lot of potential for making even better investments and more efficient investments in the benefits packages.
I agree. Thank you, Ms. Mary. And the reason for, I mean, if you think about it, this would have been the perfect time to bid this plan. You don't go buy life insurance when you have cancer. Because the argument is, or you don't go get auto insurance when you have three accidents. We have a decrease in premium right now. It's the absolute best time to bid this plan. You're going to get the best bang for your buck, for obvious reasons, because a healthier, obviously, the last year was a healthier year. This is a perfect time. You know, if we if we can't do it this year, let's hope that it works next year. But the reason I'm so concerned about it, even with this reduction, you know, we're looking at in the 2022 budget, it was $6 million for health insurance. Two years prior, it was four. There's a problem here, and we have to find a way that's really good for the employee and really good for the taxpayer. And I think we can do that. And I think that the employee, if they're educated on it, and I think they'll buy into it, because they're great. HSAs are the way to go, period, in my opinion.
Anything else? If not, call the roll on the motion to amend.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Let's move to the original motion, right?
Oh, I have one more amendment, and it's it's a good one. It's not. It's not. So I think folks recall Library Director Anderson coming a few meetings ago, talk about something that was changing, that wasn't in the city manager's budget, and so we just need to align it. It actually is, it would be a decrease in the recommended budget from the city manager, just so we can get things aligned. So the changes were, and Jan sent me this today. So in the 2023 budget, we, you know, have the first five lines of the library, but then those are actually changed now. Oh, my gosh, I have too much stuff. Oh, it's right there. Okay, so in in the library line, the city manager's, and this was, remember, we were moving a part, she's moving a part-time person up to full-time.
Do we have a, is it going to be a motion and discussion afterwards?
Yes, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so the motion is to amend the 2023 proposed budget in the following way. So for the library line items under regular employees, it is currently at 838,024. That would be now 869,096.48. I'm letting Michaela get it all. And then the the part-time, the next line is temporary and part-time employees. This is where we're doing the saving. The the proposed budget is 165,654,000. The library is at, so it should be 125, 125,029. Health insurance is the next line. Two, in the proposed budget, 232,344. Should be 233,849. Life insurance is the next line, from 735 to 833. Social Security, from 62 to 28, to 65, 365. Yes. And Medicare is the last one, 14024 to 14199. And this is, would, all of this combined is 4,187.52 less than the recommended budget. We just had to get those categories correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul, moved by Carrie, second by Paul. Any further discussion?
And I just want to check, Ms. Anderson, did I get all of that right? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Any discussion? If not, call the roll on the motion to amend.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Moving on to the original motion. There's no further discussion. Call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Could we ask Dave to prepare what it looks like, not like tomorrow, but in the near future, on what it looks like now before the next meeting? General fund-wise, enterprise, fund-wise and fund, you know, the actual funds that are sitting? Because I think it's, it's probably not quite a million, but it's fairly close, maybe 800,000.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just so I can make sure that I'm abundantly clear, we will make the changes, add the positions or remove positions. General fund, funding that is in excess of what was in the preliminary budget, we just want to remove from the mill levy. So reduce, reduce the mill levy.
Yeah, that was in our motion, yeah. But what I, what I'm asking for, I guess, is like a, a single-page cheat sheet. Okay, here was what the budget was, here's what we removed from general fund, here's what the budget was enterprise, here's what we removed or add, sales tax, you know, and just something. So it's, I mean, there was a lot of, lot in those motions, so it'd be nice just to say, okay, where are we actually at now? A dollar, you know, to the dollar.
Yes, we'll get that done ASAP.
Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
If Dave could include in that, I'm always curious to know, we heard about a lot of the increases people were bringing in their, their proposed tax statement increases tonight. I want to know what was saved through all of this work to the average homeowner. Or, you know, I guess it's typically based on $100,000 of property value. If you can tell us what that savings could look like.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we do have that illustration in the, in the preliminary budget, so we'll update that as well, so we can see what that would look like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Moving on. Item 7.2, application for property tax exemption for improvements to commercial buildings. North Dakota Century Code 57-2.2, Park Place Monet LLC, 27th Avenue Northwest. What are the wishes of the council?
Move of approval.
Moved by Lisa?
Second.
Second by Kerry. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Not, call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to item 7.3, the Bel Air/Washington Elementary Safe Routes to School Budget Amendment. What are the wishes of the council? Moved by Kerry?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to ask Lance to come up and address an issue. Thank you. We've been working on these routes, safe routes to schools for years now, it seems. And we got a really interesting, and I think a very appropriate, letter from a constituent this past couple of months, asking us to take another look at these. In particular, she was, actually, she lives in the Bel Air neighborhood, but she was really expressing skepticism about the value of putting in something in Bel Air, given the, the paths children took or didn't take to school, and changes in the neighborhood and things like that. And she pointed out in her letter, it's been quite a few years since we've had that very detailed study, and came up with that list of priorities for the schools. If you could just briefly address that issue for all of us, in terms of where we're at with the, with the priority study, and I think you sent us a little letter saying it's probably time to look at it again. So bring us up to speed.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padraig Gula, we're, we probably have another, I'd say about five years of projects left before that original list is complete. There's a couple of projects in there that are probably, I just don't know if they're quite feasible. They're on steep hills, there's a lot of obstructions in the way, and, you know, it may not be the best use of city funds. So those sort of things we'll evaluate as we go forward. But we do have a couple of projects that'll be coming up in the next few years, a couple that you've already approved us to pursue with the DOT. So we are in the process of going through that work as we speak. At some point, we will come back to council and request funding be used for an updated study. And likely, we'd also probably ask that we start an investment in a, a study or some sort of program to help address the ADA pedestrian ramp needs around the city. We put this project, or this plan together back in 1990, when the ADA Act came out. And when you read the, the typewritten document, it has about one paragraph on ADA ramps, and the goal was to get all the, them completed citywide by the year 2000. Twenty-two years later, we're, we're nowhere near that. So in, in our department's position, not only do we need to look at sidewalk improvements where, where they should be, but I think we should really start looking at these other improvements to try to get our curb ramps up to where they should be. So I'm just planting that seed for now, but we'll address that in, in future budget years with the council.
Do you have any idea when you'll come to us with a report and some rough timelines, and when we'll be, we'll be asking for another study?
I would say it's probably going to be at least probably two years. By the time we've, we've worked through these projects, we'd be in a position to, to study that again. Because we want to have the report done a couple of years ahead of time, so that when we, because, because the DOT usually wants requests about three years ahead of the project. So as we're completing the projects that we have on the books coming up, a couple of years from now, we'll be positioned to update the study, and then have requests in for the DOT when they, when they solicit in the falls.
So you think, you think then we should stick with the old plan, even though it's, what, 20 years old or something, and there have been major changes in the community, and like the flood and stuff? You think the old plan is still worth sticking with?
Oh, I'm sorry, are we talking the ADA plan?
No, the other one.
I think that that plan is good until we finish those projects.
To five years?
Yep. And then we will request funding to study additional projects around the city.
So you think even though the original study on eight, on the school routes is still that old, you think, you think it's still valid?
I do, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Thank you, Lance. Any other questions for Lance? If not, any other discussion? Let's call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson? Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Moving on to 7.4, Services Agreement with Minot Veterinary Clinic for Annual Impoundment.
Move of approval.
Moved by Lisa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Janser. Any discussion? No discussion? Let's call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, Personal Appearances. This is a time when you can come up and address the council, if there's anything you would like to address the council with. Nothing? Let's move on to item nine, Miscellaneous and Discussion Items. Anything the council has? If not?
I just have, it's just, so I just want to, I know this budget process has been long and tedious, but I am very proud of this governing body for the work that we've done. I think we've listened to constituents. I think we have brought the, it down a lot. Is it at zero? No, it's not. But I'm proud that we've been able to work together to find ways to, to, to help the taxpayers. And it says a lot, I think, of the, the integrity and respect that members have for one another. And so I appreciate all of my colleagues up here for, you know, working hard to get us to where we're at, and being civil and respectful and creative. So, thank you.
Steve?
Just to kind of piggyback on that, and this is more toward the public, one of the things, I've been through many budgets now, and one of the things I've realized is that you never get everything that you want, and you always have to make compromises. And I think we've done that, and I think, as Kerry said, we've done that in a respectful, appropriate manner. We've been involved with this budget from the beginning, shaping it, giving direction to staff, and they've responded, I think, appropriately. There's always been, and there always will be some fine tuning toward the end, as we've done tonight. But I think it's very important that the public understand that, you know, we, we try to deliver the, the best services we can in a cost-efficient manner. We're very mindful of, of taxes. We pay them ourselves. But we also have responsibility to the community, and sometimes if you cut corners now, it catches up with you later. And in many ways, we're trying to catch up on many years of cutting corners and kicking the can down the road, as the expression goes. And eventually, you have to pay up. So I guess I would just encourage the public to understand that, that it costs money to deliver services. We want to deliver services. We want to deliver them efficiently. There's no argument about that. But again, I, I would ask for some patience and understanding. It's a very difficult position to be in, to try to balance all these conflicting needs and conflicting priorities. And I think the end result has been adequate. So I guess I would just ask people to understand that it is a complex process, and I think that's politics, right? It's the sausage makings, people say. And everybody compromises in the end, and you never get everything you'd like to see. So I appreciate the input, and I appreciate the collegiality, too. I think it's working out okay. Not as best, not as well as maybe we might like, any of us, but I think it's working out okay, and that's about all we can ask for these days.
Thank you, Steve. Steve, Paul?
I'll echo all those comments, and I, and I think just maybe to, for, for next year's budget, I know it's been said that we're not gonna take much of a break, jump right back into next year's budget, have a little reprieve, and then, and then get right into that. And I think council would be beneficial, it'd be beneficial, council were involved with maybe some of the overarching ideas that we want to see in next year's budget, maybe, maybe at the beginning of the year, when that process really gets started, or, or closer to the holiday season, after everybody gets a, a break and a chance to decompress from this. Just to have some of our ideas and thoughts and projects that we want factored into next year's budget, to be at the forefront of staff's minds, so.
Thank you, Paul. Anything else? Not, let's move on to liaison reports. Paul, start us off.
My committees meet this week, so I'll have more after that.
Roscoe?
There's a zoning ordinance steering committee Wednesday morning, 8:00 AM, in city council chambers.
Steve, you can, planning is planning. We're moving forward. More county commission planning. We're still doing good, but, yep.
I think it was a pretty good meeting this time.
Yep. And the library met last week, but I was not in attendance, but I don't think anything made happen, because Director Anderson would have let me know.
Lisa?
Well, if you'll see on your desk, you have some lovely little gifts. They're, they're not specific to anybody's breath, but you do have toothbrushes and toothpaste on your desk, and those are a gift from Dakota College at Botno. I've had two meetings in the last couple of weeks related to our CTE, so I always like to report good news. Of course, DCB will be running the programs at the, the CTE, and they are well into the process of having the curriculum developed for a dental assistant program. And those doors will open, no matter what. They will open August of 2023. There will be a program that will begin, and DCB is in the process now of, of kind of getting the information out and attracting some students who would attend that program. Following pretty closely on those footsteps will be the dental hygienist program. So that's going to take the main floor of the CTE building. They're hoping that there's funding, that they'll be able to have some classrooms upstairs, so additional programs could come not long after that. And if our legislators are so willing, and we're hoping that some other funding will come through in the next biennium to help finish the building and add more programs. But I am very happy to report that the dental assistant program will begin August of 2023. Our liaison committee for the county, city, school, and parks will be Wednesday at 1:00. Source Base and Planning Commission Executive Board meeting is October 11th, and their annual meeting is October 18th.
Thank you. Steve?
Let's see here. The Comprehensive Plan Revision Committee will next meet on the 30th of September at 11:00. The consultants have completed their survey of the public and had several public input meetings, which were very active. People participated very actively, and offered up lots of ideas, and they're currently writing up their report and trying to revise the land use map. So that'll be presented this Friday, when the 30th is. So that, that's gone well. The County Planning Commission had actually a productive session. We talked a lot about what the point of planning is and our priorities, agriculture being one of them. It was interesting that even us rural, excuse me, urban folks gave a very strong, extraordinarily strong endorsement toward making life as easy as possible for people in the rural areas, particularly those in production agriculture. So we had a, we had a healthy and productive meeting. The Commission on Aging met last Friday. Things are under control there. There was seniors' day at the zoo, something like 225 people showed up. So they're continuing to get the word out, trying to attend the basic needs of senior citizens, and trying to make their lives a little bit more interesting on a daily basis. Let's see here. The Emergency Resources Council met. Nothing major came out of that. That was a couple of weeks ago. I'm now on a 911 committee with the county and the city, and that, I attended my first quarterly meeting last week, and it's, it's amazing, all the behind-the-scenes stuff that goes on in trying to provide appropriate dispatch services and answering the 911 phone lines. Just to give you some sense of how busy that is, they get an average of 234 calls for service per day for Minot Ward County and some other outlying emergency service agencies. That's with an average of two dispatchers per shift. They try to have three, but with vacations and training and people being sick, it's hard to manage. So with two dispatchers, we're, we're running 234 calls a day on the average, a lot of calls. The budget is also pretty significant. The state has embarked on a major project to improve emergency communications, radio communications, and that has significant impacts. Our new dispatch center, for example, and we're meeting with Motorola about the radios, that we're looking at costing $730,000 just to upgrade the system. And another thing that you'd never probably think about, each of the outdoor warning sirens we have will have to be upgraded to take account of this new radio system. And we're looking at a cost of about $3,800 per siren. If I remember correctly, we have 18 sirens in Minot and 30 in Ward County. So that's a lot of money. And again, you would never realize that, and you take those for granted, and they're, they're potentially a life-saving kind of a service the government provides. So there's a lot of hidden costs that may not seem apparent. It's not just all a dump truck or a position. There are a lot of infrastructure costs, particularly as technology becomes much more advanced and much more expensive. So I'm looking forward to that assignment, and we'll keep you updated on that group, too. A vital function in our community, and one that, again, most people only recognize how expensive and time-consuming it is to, to do it the right way. So a productive month, basically.
Thank you, Steve. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm waiting for some meetings to occur, so I don't have anything to report liaison-wise. But I would like to make the council aware that Friday of this week, Task Force 21 will be holding its 11th Nuclear Triad Symposium, which Harold alluded to early on in the meeting. If you would like to attend all or part of that without traveling to our nation's capital, if you, if you shoot Derek an email, he can get you a Teams link to be able to, to join that remotely. And I would certainly invite all of you to at least maybe sample a little bit of it. We'll have some of the nation's top experts talking about the triad modernization, which directly affects Minot Air Force Base, of course, with two legs of the triad, as well as policy and military strategy, folks. So it's gonna be a, a very high-profile day, and you're certainly all invited to take in part of that.
Thank you, Mark. And for myself, I had Task Force 21 since our last meeting, which we were deep in the planning of the symposium coming up, Chamber EDC board meeting, and also, we had the first meeting of the ad hoc committee to take a look at the magic fund. And I think that is, that's, we've got a good team on there, and the discussion was incredibly positive. So I'm looking forward to getting a full report from them and, and recommendations by the, by, in December, so. So I'm looking forward to getting a full report from them and recommendations by the, in December, so.
You want to mention the special council meeting?
Oh, yes. Also, yeah, with the sister city agreement and the delegation coming in from Shein, Norway, we will have a special city council meeting on Monday to formally sign the sister city agreement. We'll have that here, should be a short meeting, hopefully. But, yeah, we're going to be spending a day with the delegation from Shein, Norway, showing them around Minot, and culminating with signing of the sister city agreement here. So, thanks for the reminder. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Is that a, motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second it, I'll second it. Paul, you have to do it.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're adjourned.